I will now call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for April 1st, 2025. At this time, I'd like to call on Councilmember Pfeifer to lead us in a moment of silent reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to be followed for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rush, will you please do the roll call?
Mayor Simpson. Mayor Protem Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Rupert.
Here.
And Councilmember Pfeifer.
I'd like to make the motion. Thank you. I'll go ahead and make the motion to excuse Mayor Simpson from tonight's business meeting.
All right. Please vote. Sorry. How it should work. All right. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Councilmember Simpson excused. Thank you. Presented are the minutes of the city council business meeting dated March 18th, 2025. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes will stand as presented. Next, we have proclamations, and first, I will make the first proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas although every child deserves to grow up in nurturing environment, free from harm and fear, all children do not receive appropriate care. In fact, too many children become victims at the hands of abusive predators. And whereas Arvada has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and to help parents obtain the assistance they need, and whereas our community is stronger when all citizens become aware of children, child abuse prevention, and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs such as Ralston House, Jeffco Gilpin CASA, and Adams-Broomfield CASA succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas it is up to us as a community to work tirelessly to end the abuse through awareness and action, and whereas all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city of Arvada hereby designate the month of April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We encourage all Arvada citizens to join in renewing our commitment to preventing child abuse and learning what we can to promote the safety and well-being of children. Every responsible person will agree that even one abused child is too many dated this first day of April 2025. And I believe we have some folks to receive the recognition, so please come up.
I'm the Development Officer for Ralston House Child Advocacy Center. We really want to thank the council for recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month. April's a big time for us. You'll see us out planting blue pinwheel gardens. We actually have a display here at City Hall down in the atrium, and we've encouraged all of our City of Arvada employees to participate and support Ralston House in planting a blue pinwheel garden. We'll interview over a thousand children this year at one of our locations. We have three throughout Jefferson, Broomfield, Adams, and Gilpin counties, and we're just a safe place for kids to come and be interviewed. It's a house-like setting, and it helps in not re-traumatizing them as they go through this process, which is very, it can be very overwhelming at times. So we really appreciate the City of Arvada and all the support you guys provide. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josie Martinez, and I am the Community Engagement Manager over at CASA of Adams and Broomfield Counties, and I just wanted to express gratitude to you all, the city of Arvada, to, you know, helping us continue the work that we do at CASA. We do very similar work that Jeffco and Gilpin does as well, and so we are just thankful for your guys' continued support.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Melissa Helmuth, Director of Operations over at the CASA of Jefferson and Gilpin Counties. And again, just to echo, thank you very much. We're very proud to be doing the work that we do for all the kids, and can't say it enough of one child being abused is one too many. So we will continue to do the work, and thank you for all of your support. Thank you for all of your support as well. And if you have any questions, or you would like to become a CASA volunteer, please take a look at our websites. We are in desperate need of volunteers, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and I'll just say, as a former foster parent, I've really valued the work of CASA and also Ralston House, so thank you so much for all you do. Next, I call on Councilmember Ambrose to present the proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Yes, thank you. Would the Deputy Director of Jeffcom, Jen Sandoval, and Operation Managers Jen Guston and Kyle Mickelson and Gina Gomez come to the front to accept the proclamation I'm about to read? And if you all would like to, I'm going to do this backwards from the previous proclamation, if you would like to address us about the important work that you do for the National Public Safety Telecommunicators, we'd love to hear it.
Thank you. My name is Kyle Mickelson. I'm an operations manager with Jeffcom. One week out of the year, all across the country, we take a week to honor the commitment and the work done by 911 professionals across the country. We certainly want to express gratitude to the council for participating in honoring the team that we have under us who works to strengthen the already great relationship we have with the city, and just recognize what they do to help keep this community safe and their dedication to all those goals.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, council. I'm Ed Brady, Chief of Police for the Arvada Police Department, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank our telecommunicators partners at Jeffcom for all the work that they do. They have an incredibly difficult job, from filtering information as it comes in, to getting it to the console to be dispatched out to the officers on the street, to coordinating the officers on the street, which can be a very difficult task, and they do a great job. And I just want to say again, on behalf of the Arvada Police Department and the City of Arvada, thank you.
Well said. Thank you. So I am honored to read the following proclamation. Whereas the continued vitality of the city of Arvada depends on having safe homes, neighborhoods, schools, and workplaces throughout our community, and whereas the employees of the Arvada Police Department are dedicated to delivering the highest quality police response strategies and professional police services to citizens, and whereas efficient concise communications are essential to all police response strategies, and whereas the delivery of quality police services are dependent on public safety dispatchers receiving and disseminating critical information 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado, that April 13th through the 19th, 2025 be proclaimed as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And the city of Arvada, and we urge all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, and businesses to recognize that public safety dispatchers perform a crucial service to the community and to the operation of our police department. Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda is public comment for items not scheduled on the agenda for a public hearing, which is limited to three minutes per person. Public comment is your opportunity to address your city council. We always listen carefully to what you have to say, but we do not respond to comments during the meeting. We will refer any issues raised during public comment to the city team for further research and resolution if appropriate. So first, I have Susan Doak. Please come up.
Good evening, council. Susan Doak, 13891 West 68th Way. Jefferson County has never had year-round overnight sheltering for those living on the street. In 2013, Severe Weather Shelter Network was set up to provide emergency shelter in local churches across the county during the winter. They had a small paid staff, but depended largely on volunteers. Last year, the severe weather shelter shut down. In the 10 years that this emergency response was operational, no viable winter sheltering was established in our county. When the severe weather shelter closed, Hat Forest increased emergency sheltering in South Jeffco with governmental support. In Central Jeffco, the city of Lakewood provided substantial funding to recovery works for overnight sheltering. No plan was put forward by Arvada to replace the severe weather shelter services. Thankfully, the Arvada faith community stepped up to provide emergency sheltering in extremely cold weather. The Rising Church had no desire to start a new program in Old Town Arvada, but no other church was able to provide a physical location to bring the unsheltered inside at night. Storyline Church, the Arvada Vineyard, and Spirit of Christ Catholic Church agreed to coordinate volunteers and food to make this work, with many other church and the community volunteers pitching in. At least 235 volunteers helped out. But it was hard. It was one of the coldest winters many of us can remember, and the National Weather Service data confirms this. We had to be open 46 nights, even though our criteria was less generous than severe weather shelters, and we operated for two fewer months. An average of 45 people stayed each night we were open. We were lucky, no one died of exposure on the streets of Arvada this winter, thanks to the faith community. Tonight, I urge you to provide funding to Mission Arvada for the services already provided, and to fund the program for the coming winter, so paid staff can coordinate this response. If the city isn't going to provide direct services, they need to support the nonprofits doing the work. We all benefit from fewer emergency room visits for phosbyte or hypothermia, and avoid the human tragedy and bad publicity of a death on our streets. The whole community benefits, so the whole community should contribute. That means you, our city leaders, need to approve funding for cold weather sheltering. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Jen Thinnemore, Jim Thinnemore.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, the public. Appreciate this time to come before you and express a few things. What I'd like to do is bring some kudos to the city for the 72nd corridor that you guys have done such a great job on, taking and developing that area to where there's good east-west transportation to get across there. So kudos to that. I know you said ongoing project, still trying to get some easement and things, and going to be dealing with the railroad tracks there. What I would like to bring to the attention of the city is that, right now, the city of Westminster is in a process of taking and changing their part of the 72nd corridor down to only one lane in east direction, which is going to create a bottleneck and would create a problem for the citizens of Arvada going east and west on that 72nd corridor. I'm not real sure all the ins and outs of what Westminster's ideas of doing that, but I see it as a negative to the community of Westminster, and I also think it's going to be a negative on the city of Arvada. So if the planning department could contact the city of Westminster and come to terms on that, you know, I'm definitely not in favor of that. When you take and create a bottleneck to where you're taking two roads, or two directions, and where they've got two lanes going east and west, you take and make them only one lane, when you have fire equipment such as, you know, ambulances, fire trucks, even police cars, it takes and slows that traffic down to where usually, you know, the fire department's trying to, and ambulances are trying to respond within a four-minute window. That's life and death when you slow that down, when people are having health issues, and also in the situations of the fire department trying to respond to fires. So that's just a recommendation for me to bring to you guys, because I didn't know if you were aware of that, and if not, get ahold of the city manager, Jody, over there, and talk to him. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Eileen Weinert.
Good evening, council. My name is Eileen Weinert, and I live at 10882 West 54th Place in Arvada. My husband and I have lived in Arvada for 19 years. We sympathize with the business owners in Old Town Arvada and the issue around St. Anne's school. However, no one except Mission Arvada has stepped up to do anything to solve the homeless problem in Arvada. As Mayor Simpson said at a meeting I attended last September at the Early College Building, doing nothing hasn't worked. It's time to do something, something more than what's been done. I help organize and schedule a group of about 100 faith-based volunteers from Spirit of Christ, St. Joan of Arc, Shrine of St. Anne, Arvada United Methodist Church, Arvada Covenant Church, and Community of Grace. We met last fall when we heard Severe Weather Shelter Network was closing, and quickly came up with a solution for emergency overnight sheltering. We have all provided food, supplies, clothing, volunteers, and money for the Arvada overnight weather shelter this past season. Arvada Vineyard and Storyline Church volunteers have done the same. Many of our volunteers also provide food and serve breakfast and lunch every weekday at the Mission Arvada Day Shelter. Even though we provide the food and the volunteers, it still takes money to provide plates, napkins, cups, drinks, cleaning supplies, heat, water, and to take care of the building. We are passionate about taking care of those less fortunate, because we are called by Jesus Christ to do so. But we need the city of Arvada to step up and help us continue our work in whatever way you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Chris Coolman.
Honorable city council members representing the city of Arvada, my name is Chris Coolman, and I'm here this evening on behalf of my family and my wife, who share interest and concerns of the other parents who attend Shrine of St. Anne's Elementary School about ongoing issues in regards of public safety. Recently, my wife, firsthand account, called non-emergency line to report a woman directly across the street from a school, weaving and acting belligerent at 8:00 a.m. Arvada Police Department was very responsive and sent an officer out right away to check on her and asked her to leave. My wife also followed up phone call with the police department regarding this incident. This school year, my wife has saw multiple people smoking something out of a pipe near the library again, and police were called and came out and checked the situation. Beginning of the school year, my family went to the library to find it, just in the middle of the process of closing, because they found illicit products and meth paraphernalia found in the bathrooms, and sadly, the reports are increasing. With the years of hard work done by previous and current volunteers and elected members of the city council, with shared focus on the rest, shared focus and vision of making Old Town the rest of Arvada a thriving and inclusive community, I'm concerned about this problem negatively undoing all the progress and driving people and businesses away. I reiterate our gratitude for law enforcement and response and sincerity in helping out, but advocate the need for a more effective and lasting solution, elevating this level to the help of the council, looking for your help. You know, this is an ongoing problem. It's getting worse. Concerned about the safety of our kids at our school, and it just, we keep receiving notifications of letters from our school, and that these interactions are becoming more and more negative. Like, our school was shut down not too long ago for hearing gunshots in Old Town Arvada, and I'm gravely concerned for our kids. And it's not just our school, it's also Lawrence Elementary and neighboring businesses, you know, this, you know, putting a Band-Aid on the problem with having law enforcement come in is one thing, but it seems like it needs to be elevated to a more permanent solution, and I'm hoping that our voices are heard as parents, you know. I respect your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Dan Rickard.
Good evening, council members. Dan Rickard, 15816 West 74th Place. I come to you once again as a concerned parent and a member of the Arvada faith community. I'm the leader of our parents on the playground at Shrine of St. Anne's School. I find it ironic that this month the council is recognizing child abuse prevention, yet this council still takes no action to address the unhoused community that's causing massive public safety concerns in and around our school. We continue to face issues with the unhoused community in Old Town as they frequent the Rising for services and then move on and through our property, often using drugs in front of our children, yelling profanities at our children, often leaving behind dangerous drug paraphernalia, and at worst, trying to give things to our kids through the fence. Do all children deserve a safe and nurturing environment or not? Frankly, I'm surprised this issue isn't even on the agenda tonight, given the council's stated commitment to promote the safety and well-being of our children in today's proclamation. I'm not here to argue about the need for services for the unhoused community in Northwest Jeffco. It's clear there's an issue. My issue is that they're taking place 347 feet from our school. We need to stop funding these services in such close proximity to our school. I also want to recognize the Arvada PD, who's been a great partner on this. Their response has been the one thing that's actually taken place that we've noticed. I've even met with some of you and taken you around our school. The city manager came out, and we found needle paraphernalia on the ground right outside of our fence. We've had seven safety incidents on one day in March. That was four phone calls to Arvada PD. Not seven, because half of those overlapped, and there were already Arvada PD on site. We've shared photos with police and even with the Rising, and are told that these people are not seeking services there, but then our school officials watch as those same people go and seek those services, or at worst, bang on our front door, thinking that we're the homeless shelter. A question for you all, why does Arvada City Code prohibit not having a bar within 500 feet of a school, but does not limit organizations from providing services to people openly abusing substances in front of our children, or even registering as sex offenders? Again, all within 347 feet of our school. How is this okay? As many of you know, we moved operations recently in a week due to an asbestos problem that we had in our school. So don't take a decrease in 911 calls as an indicator that things are getting better. We've been in Old Town since the 60s. We will be back, and we will not be silent about this until our kids are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Bennett Mueller.
Hello, my name is Bennett Mueller. I live in Fieldstone, an Arvada neighborhood. I'm 12 years old, and I started serving in Severe Weather Shelter Network in 2019. I served there with my nine-year-old sister, Emlyn, and my seven-year-old brother, Grant. My family served at Severe Weather Shelter Network until they had to close their doors in the summer of 2024, in which we moved to serving with Mission Arvada. I asked my mom if I could speak here tonight to express my feelings on the misconception of homelessness. I also want to express my desire to grow up in a community that sees people as individuals and strives to support them in what they need, as opposed to a community that assumes all homeless people are unstable and dangerous. People often use the label homeless to describe people who don't have a home. The truth is, there's much more to these people than this fact. I want to share the story of James, a guest I met at Severe Weather Shelter Network, who experienced the stigma associated with the homelessness label when trying to find work. James cut his work hours to care for his sick mother. After she passed, he found himself homeless because he couldn't cover his bills due to his recently reduced hours. He then found another job, but due to COVID, he was forlaid. Even though he was in Mensa, the society for the top 2% of IQ, he was unable to find work because of the stigma of the homelessness in the label. Here's a quote from James. "No one wants to hire you when you're homeless. They assume things about you. They lump you into the same category as the bad apples. You'd be surprised how many people with degrees are living on the street. Lots of talented people out there." End quote. James found hope because of the volunteers providing him with overnight shelter and work program needs. It's because of these volunteers and the Rising Church working together that guests like James have gotten into work programs and into permanent housing. This compassion, these services, and more are available at Mission Arvada due to 235 volunteers and the Rising Church. As my city council, I ask you to consider these people in our community as individuals with unique needs. This is the type of community that I want to grow within. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Mueller.
My name is Susan Mueller, and I live in Fieldstone off of West 64th Street. I serve as a lead volunteer for Storyline, one of three churches partnering with Mission Arvada and the Rising Church. Previously, I served on the board of Severe Weather Shelter Network, which closed its doors due to a lack of sufficient funding. As a volunteer community, we were gravely concerned- As a volunteer community, we were gravely concerned last September when there was no concrete plan for an emergency shelter in Arvada for the upcoming winter. So we organized and committed to doing what we could to protect our unhoused neighbors. Stepping up to fill this gap required more than just good intentions. It demanded strong leadership and effective organization. In less than eight weeks, Arvada, Mission Arvada mobilized volunteers, raised funds, and completed essential building upgrades such as boiler repairs and emergency lighting to meet code requirements for overnight sheltering. This rapid effort ensured a safe and compliant place for those in need before winter arrived. Running a volunteer-based organization is challenging. Mobilizing volunteers on short notice is exponentially more difficult. In Colorado, we often don't know the severity of weather more than 24 hours in advance. Yet every time Mission Arvada has needed to open, we have had the volunteers ready to serve a hot meal, provide a safe place for people to sleep, and show human kindness. The ability to activate 235 volunteers across three churches on short notice night after night reflects the strength of our Mission Arvada's organization and commitment. That doesn't just happen. That is leadership. We uphold strict behavioral standards where even minor infractions such as disrespect can result in a guest being banned. When a guest is banned, we provide them a bus ticket and directions to another shelter outside of Arvada. Over 130 individuals have been banned, emphasizing our commitment to encouraging a safe and respectful environment for all of Old Town. The reality is, the light rail, the library, and the parks, all within a block of Mission Arvada are essential for the unhoused community who were here before the shelter. The presence of Mission Arvada only supports a safe and respectful environment. The way I see it, the city has a choice. Support the work that is already being done or take on the responsibility of providing these services itself, but to do nothing is inhumane. Mission Arvada is an example of what is possible when community comes together with strong leadership. Every cold night that passes, lives are protected because of the dedication of volunteers, the structure we have built. The city has an opportunity to stand alongside us, lending its support to a proven solution that is already making a difference in the lives of Arvada's most vulnerable residents. This is about ensuring that no one in our community is left without shelter, safety, or hope.
Thank you. Next we have Pat Malone.
Good evening. My name is Pat Malone. I live at 6273 Kilmer Loop in Arvada. Tonight, my attention is temporarily turned from speaking about protecting immigrants towards supporting the essential work of Mission Arvada. I strongly support the city reimbursing Mission Arvada's costs to house people during severe weather, as you have done in prior years. Though I've donated clothing in the past and make a monthly financial contribution to the mission, I had never participated more fully than that until this winter. I volunteered on a night of severe weather when the mission opened its doors to take in people who would otherwise be sleeping on the street in temperatures of 20 degrees or less. What I saw was that there are rules and any disruptions are quickly quelled. I saw an orderly process, kindness, laughter, and dignity that night. I strongly urge each of you who haven't already to volunteer at least one night at Mission Arvada. I've been shocked, saddened, and disappointed over the last few months to hear a constant stream of what Old Town businesses and St. Anne's student families have had to endure over months and even years. It seems the city has failed them and all Arvada residents who want to enjoy and be proud of our Old Town. I believe the city owes a debt of gratitude to Mission Arvada for stepping up to help people with a nice housing that likely avoids the crisis of a death in our city streets. In my opinion, funding for this work should be a permanent line item in our city's budget until such time as a solution is found regionally or locally for the homeless crisis in our Congratulations to Councilwoman Ambrose for publishing her first Substack piece called, I don't know how you pronounce it, Arva Pride. How's that sound? A newsletter about Arvada's District 2. This is a great start to build community in neighborhoods where there are many immigrants, immigrant families who need our support. I hope the remaining council members consider doing this also. And of course, as I said two weeks ago, Councilman Mormon is already doing that in a big way. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Kathy Trombley.
Good evening, council. I'm Kathy Trombley from Rolston Estates. I have grown up in Arvada all my life, raised my kids here, and now my grandchildren are growing up here. And I have watched the progress of Arvada grow, and I love all the city planning that has happened in Old Town. It's fabulous from what it used to be. And I do see, and I'm here on behalf of Mission Arvada, and Mission Arvada is supporting our neighbors in crisis. The role of Mission Arvada is simply unmatched by many nonprofits in Arvada. The pressing issue of individuals facing insurmountable barriers to stability and safety are met by Mission Arvada. Among many services provided, they step up offering lifesaving assistance, serving a severe weather shelter, and are a beacon of hope. While working toward long-term solutions, they assist individuals through the housing process, provide a temporary address, obtain IDs, bus passes, interviews, food, clothing, blankets, access to medical care and legal help, and provide meals twice a day during the week and food banks on Saturday. Severe weather shelters provide immediate relief during extreme weather conditions, offering homeless individuals a warm, safe, and welcoming environment. It has become apparent there is a need to move Mission Arvada in order to maintain a safe environment for patrons in Old Town and the safety of children at St. Anne's. Where there is a problem, there is a solution. For example, the city of Aurora has purchased an older hotel, the Crown Plaza Hotel off I-70, and is converting it into the Aurora Day Resource Center, actively, is active now at the Anschutz Campus and Recovery Works in Lakewood. My question is, why couldn't the city of Arvada do the same, potentially partnering with Wheat Ridge and purchasing one of the many hotels on I-70 and Kipling, moving the mission to one of those locations? In addition, St. Anne's School could move to one of the 19 elementary schools I watched close while I worked at, in purchasing department at Jefferson County Public Schools. Freeing up the location there for additional commercial use and improving the safety of children's welfare on all fronts. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Next I have Ben Rinkoski.
Thank you, city council members. Hello, my name is Ben Rinkoski. I'm a citizen of Arvada, and I want to express my support for Mission Arvada and the Rising Church. I'm not a member of the Rising, but I attend Arvada Vineyard, and I'm one of our over 50 volunteers who helped with the extreme weather overnight shelter this winter, as been mentioned previously tonight. I cannot fully, I cannot fully express how impressed I was with the volunteers from Mission Arvada, Spirit of Christ Catholic Church, Storyline Church, and my own Arvada Vineyard, who all sacrificed so much and worked so hard for no material rewards. Over what was a bitterly cold winter, they welcomed sometimes over 60 of our neighboring, of our neighbors experiencing homelessness into a warm building and provided homemade meals and companionship. Through this, I learned the vast array of services Mission Arvada provides during the day that are critical resources for our community, such as a day shelter, food bank, and health and navigation services. And all this is done with love and genuine concern for anyone who walks through their doors, no matter what they believe or how they came to these circumstances. That is what the church should be in the community, and the Rising is a shining example of that. I truly sympathize with concerns about safety from fellow parents, from business owners, and other community members, but I just want to say that I do believe Mission Arvada is the solution to, not the cause of these problems. Mission Arvada does not enable bad behavior and in fact has strict rules for all their guests, which I have seen enforced, to ensure the safety of all involved. The best way to solve homelessness is to serve individuals where they are, and that's what Mission Arvada does. I just want to close with a quote from Mother Teresa that, "We think sometimes that poverty is only being hungry, naked, and homeless. The poverty of being unwanted, unloved, and uncared-for is the greatest poverty. We must start in our own homes to remedy this kind of poverty. Mission Arvada and all of its wonderful volunteers embody this ethos by providing unconditional love and dignity to our disadvantaged neighbors, and they help our community in a way that makes me proud to be in Arvada. Thank you."
Thank you. Next I have Betty Jansen.
I'm Betty Jansen at 5906 Newcom Court in Arvada. I have abandoned the remarks that I was going to make this evening based on all of the comments, affirmations of what Mission Arvada is doing. I want to echo the requests that they need more support. They need more support from you leaders in our city. Arvada has been blessed with the reputation by many of being a wonderful place to live and to raise children. It seems to me that not being able to respond creatively and helpfully to those who are less fortunate and are unhoused is rapidly chipping away and making cracks in that reputation. I'm also aware that that reputation didn't just happen. It happened because of people like you leaders in our community made it happen. You deserve credit for the reputation of Arvada being a great place to live. I was encouraged when there was discussion of a navigation center that certainly wouldn't solve all of the issues related to what has been described, but it certainly would have gone a long way to provide needed resources and services for people who have navigated unfortunate situations and are now living on the streets. I'm aware that those plans were abandoned partly because of community backlash. I think whatever the council does and decides to do, there is going to be backlash. So in addition to the challenges that have been presented regarding the work Mission Arvada does, I want to add the challenge of the council taking responsibility for educating residents regarding the unhoused, the situations that have happened to create them in, living on the streets. Time expired. So my challenge is, can the council facilitate educating residents about the homeless and dissipating the fear residents have of services for the homeless is homeless to be in your community? Thank you, and I'm sorry I expired.
Thank you. Next is Joyce Richardson.
I'll try not to expire. Good evening, Protem Mayor Randy and the rest of the city council. I'm Joyce Richardson, and I live at 6521 West 69th Way in Arvada. I've made Arvada my home for the past 36 years. I just want to say that change is inevitable, and Arvada must be ready to act as our residents need change. A change I fear that is coming to Arvada and neighboring cities is increased action against our marginalized residents and those who choose to aid them. We cannot let that stop us from doing what's right. The time for bravery is now. I am asking that the city make preparations for increased homelessness, evictions, deportations, and hunger due to loss of jobs. The current cruelty on the federal level will reach Arvada residents as low wages, lost benefits, unpaid social security, increased costs, and children left without parents due to deportation. I urge the council to work with city staff to make plans for meeting the increased needs coming to our city. The city can do a lot to advertise current assistance that is available, as well as working quickly to get more affordable housing in place. The council has already committed to a navigation center and a 24/7 shelter. It's important that we get those plans ready now. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is all. I have signed up for our first public comment period of three minutes. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? We'll go, you sit up first.
Good evening, council. Jordan Green, 5210 Garrison Street. I almost don't want to say what I have to say. I feel like both, both parties aren't wrong, you know, parents of St. Anne's and Mission Arvada. It's a tough one. But what I have to do, what I have to say does relate to homeless and the cost of living, which ultimately is in part a root cause to, to some of the population. So on January 13th, you had a workshop on various state legislature and the impacts to local land use in Arvada's LDC, and I want to provide a different perspective. So let's, let's start with HB 24-1152 related to ADUs. Some council comments I've heard in these chambers are, "We have flooded the market with apartments. We have to be careful with upzoning with a desire not to upzone," and then various concerns with neighborhood character being affected. These same sentiments are shared by many in the community, but there's also acknowledgement of the housing and homelessness crisis. Apartments may, apartments have not flooded the market as the demand of housing, for housing is still greater than the supply, but they certainly don't belong everywhere and at least not at this time. Therefore, if we don't allow any additional apartments to prevent upzoning to increase density in a city that is about 70% single-family along with being roughly 85% developed, and at the same time acknowledging a housing crisis exists with a supply shortage, how do we add or improve our housing stock without impacting neighborhood character? Now, this question may be a bit dramatic, but it hopefully paints the NIMBY picture on housing. By definition, every neighborhood has some type of character, and at some point I want you all to explain what type of character is worth preserving, but I don't think most of Arvada fits that bill. ADUs aren't a silver bullet, and even though Arvada has allowed them, I wouldn't say the city has been friendly toward this type of development with so many stipulations, but they do help. And I will also argue ADUs have less of an impact on existing neighborhood character than apartments or any other housing type. That is, to go along with your fear of change in character. ADUs do however fit the incremental housing supply increase bill, which is described by, "No neighborhood should experience radical change and no neighborhood should be exempt from change." Now, I too don't generally agree with the state dictating local land use. However, I previously provided a comment to you about increasing our housing supply and there being a catch that other cities have to do the same, as Arvada can't take on the full burden of the metro area's housing problem. Well, HB 24-1152 satisfies that catch and evenly distributes the burden through many municipalities. Therefore, any fear of developers and investors focusing only on, only on Arvada is simply misguided. A possible solution, however, could be opening up our subdividing process within reason to allow the flexibility of turning an ADU into another single-family dwelling and vice versa. But if you're serious about pursuing legal action against the state for non-compliance, I ask that you consider making Arvada a little bit friendlier and reducing the burden of entry on ADUs just a bit further, as the ultimate goal should be increased flexibility and adaptability with land use to decrease cost of living. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having us here. I'm Karen Cowling. I'm the director of Mission Arvada of the Rising Church. I want to thank I want to thank those who spoke on our behalf tonight and just the myriad of volunteers, especially in the faith community, that have come alongside of us over the years. They are our voters, they are your constituents. I just want to remind you of that. I also want to, I actually had notes on my phone and my phone died. Had a long day. I also wanted to thank Councilmember Rupert, who came today for a tour of Mission Arvada. We spent a good two, over two hours together, and it was great. He brought his partner, Chris, and we had very heartfelt conversation. He was able to see what we do in person, face-to-face, and really understand kind of where we're coming from. I really would like for other council members, Mr. Pfeiffer, to come and do the same. That would be amazing. So that's that piece. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, we talked today a little bit about some impending challenges that are coming up. So Recovery Works, which I will tell you modeled their program after Mission Arvada, and you can ask their director about that, they did not know what they were doing when they got their $9 million of funding, and he came to us directly. We shared all of our resources, all of our service providers, et cetera, prior to their opening. We are in conversation frequently, James and I. They are closing their doors on May 1st, and they will not have another option. It is going to be at least a six-month renovation to become a 24/7 through 65 shelter, but James and I spoke a couple of weeks ago, and it sounds like it could potentially be more like a year to 18 months. I will also tell you that Mean Street Ministries, which is very close to Recovery Works off of Colfax, this is only about eight miles from our location here at Mission Arvada, the Old Town area, they closed their doors a few months ago because they lost their building, and they're finding a new one. It looks like they're going to be reopening mid to late summer. But when they closed their doors, they had been operating for at least a couple decades as a ministry to the unhoused. Recovery Works check-ins doubled from 70 to 140 per day. Mission Arvada can, capacity is around 70 to 75 a day. James is not sending people to us. He is telling them to go downtown, but I am telling you that it's going to be an issue, and as well as the fact that the library, I'm told, is going to be closing this fall, and we may have no day shelter services in central Jefferson County and no overnight shelter services in the winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward.
Hello. My name's John Butterfield, 8455 Parfett Court, Arvada. 33 years old, born and raised in Arvada, Peck Elementary, Oberon Middle, Ralston Valley High School, raising three kids here now, myself, one of which is a first grader at Shrine of St. Anne's. And yeah, I'm a concerned parent about the safety of our children. Just a couple of weeks ago, someone tried to offer a kid something through the fence, trying to get him into their car. So what's going to happen? Like, what can we do to change something before a child does get abducted or pricks himself with a drug needle out on the sidewalk outside the fence of the playground? Something needs to change before the worst happens. So I'm here as a concerned parent. Like I said, I have three kids at home. My wife would probably like me to be there helping, but this is a priority, and I know the rest of our parish agrees. So I applaud what Mission Arvada is doing. It's great. It needs to be done. I'm compassionate for that subject, but to Dan's point, I don't think it should be done within 347 feet of a school. And that's what I have today. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak during our three-minute period? All right, with that, we will close the public comment period. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda for approval. R25-031, a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations made to the City of Arvada from the landmark exhibition. R25-032, a resolution approving an agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Brett and Andre Lee Bunch for the grant of a revocable encroachment license to accommodate a fence within a portion of the public right-of-way adjacent to 10230 West 80th Avenue and along Lee Street. And R25-033, a resolution authorizing a warranty deed from the City of Arvada conveying land for right-of-way on Highway 93, Arvada, Colorado to Department of Transportation, State of Colorado. And R25-034, a resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Arvada and TransWest Freightliner LLC for the purchase of three heavy-duty snowplows in an amount not to exceed $1,442,961. Do I have a motion? I believe, Shawna, you were first.
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I move that R dash, I'm sorry, R25-031 through R25-034 be approved.
All right. Please cast your votes. Is there any discussion? Okay. All votes are cast, and that is approved 6 to 0, with Mayor Simpson excused. Next on the agenda are resolutions. First, we will consider R25-035, a resolution authorizing agreement with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, DBA, Mile High Flood District regarding site mitigation for property acquisition of 6,000 Seacrest Drive, City of Arvada. I believe Melanie Water, Walter, excuse me, Flood Plane Administrator will be presenting this item.
Good evening, members of council. Council action is requested on the resolution authorizing an agreement with the Mile High Flood District for the site mitigation of 6,000 Seacrest Drive, which involves demolition of structures and re-establishing natural vegetation. The property is in a mapped floodway and was purchased by Mile High Flood District last fall and deeded to the City of Arvada by special warranty deed. The site mitigation satisfies the requirements of that deed.
Since this is an item in an intergovernmental agreement, is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this resolution this evening? Okay, seeing none. Any questions or discussion from council? Councilmember Marriott.
Got it. I have a question. So in that little neighborhood there, there are a number of other houses, not a lot, but five or six. Is Mile High Flood District or the city attempting to purchase any of those, or is it just if they come up for sale, they'll entertain purchasing them at that time?
Yeah, there's no active attempt to purchase the properties. We requested the neighborhood contact the city if they wanted to sell their home. So far, nobody has come forward.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or motion? Councilmember Pfeiffer.
I can make the motion if there's not any questions.
I don't have any other lights. Please go forward.
I move that Resolution 25-035, a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, DBA, Mile High Flood District regarding the site mitigation for property acquisition of 6,000 Seacrest Drive, City of Arvada, be approved.
And all votes are cast, and that is passed 6 to 0. Next, we consider R25-036, a resolution expressing the intent of the city to be reimbursed for certain expenses relating to the construction of certain wastewater improvements. Brian Archer, Chief Financial Officer, will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Pro-Term Mormon and the rest of council. The infrastructure work system has plans to issue debt later on this year in support of the utilities' master plan. I would like to speak to both of the resolutions at the same time, if I may.
Yes, please do so.
The water fund is planning on issuing $90 million in debt in support of the gross reservoir and the future treatment facility. The wastewater fund is planning on issuing approximately $13 million in debt in support of the continued work on the North Trunk Line and the Central Trunk Line. The bond proceeds are planned for issuance at the end of May. By passing this resolution, this will allow dollars that are being spent today to be reimbursed by the bond. The bond issue was built into the rate model that you approved back in December, and we feel very comfortable that the rates can cover the future debt, and the Arvada team recommends approval of both Resolutions R25-036 and R25-037.
Thank you. Mr. Archer, any questions or discussion from council? Councilmember Marriott.
I have a question, Mr. Archer. I guess if I'm understanding this right, our wastewater and water system are going to go ahead and do some work that would be covered by the bond before the bond's issued, and this allows us to get reimbursed, or, and I'm assuming the enterprise fund get reimbursed from the bond. So it brings up, leads me to the question of, is there a greater strategy here by which, you know, how far back can we go with that? Is there a greater strategy here of delaying the borrowing of money and thereby delaying the paying of interest by spending the fund balance largely down and then borrowing money and replenishing that as opposed to what you'd picture, which is borrow the money and then spend the money after you receive it?
Councilmember Marriott, I certainly appreciate the question, and the team has done a lot of work on a cash flow analysis along with some of our outside experts, and we do feel like issuing debt at this time is appropriate. Certainly understand your question around, could we wait? We certainly could wait a little while, but there are some pretty large expenditures that are going to start on both of these projects in the upcoming months, and we're feeling like we're going to get a little low if we don't issue the debt at this point in time.
Right, okay. Are there, whether there are government financial accounting rules around this, state law, federal law, anything around, you know, kind of guardrails around this procedure of, you know, reimbursing yourself for things you've already, you've already spent with borrowed money?
Yeah, we're very restricted on what we can use this for, and they have to be items related to what was approved as part of the bond issuance. And really what you're seeing are things like preliminary design and some contract work. Usually, we do not reimburse ourselves for any construction-related costs.
Okay. And what is it that, what rules are we following? Is it accounting rules? Is it state laws, federal law? Any idea?
I'm phoning a friend right now.
Okay.
So our expert, Maria, has told me that there are IRS rules that don't allow us to go any further back than 60 days, and then we follow state law on what qualifies.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Further questions or a motion from council? Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Please go ahead.
I move that CB 25-007, an ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-
I believe we're on Resolution 25-36.
That's ordinance, sorry. R25-036. A resolution expressing the intent of the city to be reimbursed for certain expenses relating to the construction of certain wastewater improvements be approved.
Thank you. And all votes are cast, and that passes 6 to 0. Finally, we will consider R25-037, a resolution expressing the intent of the city to be reimbursed for certain expenses relating to the construction of certain water improvements. And Mr. Archer, you already spoke to this. Do you have further comment?
No additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council?
I'll make the motion.
Please do so. I see no other questions.
I move that R25-037, a resolution expressing the intent of the city to be reimbursed for certain expenses relating to the construction of certain water improvements be approved.
And all votes are cast, and that passes 6 to 0. Next, we will go to first readings, and I believe Councilmember Davis will be presenting this.
Yes, thank you. There are ordinances for first reading. CB 25-006, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2025. And CB 25-007, an ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way on West 80th Avenue and Lee Street located approximately at 7990 Lee Street, City of Arvada, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado. And CB 25-008, an ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way on West 80th Avenue and Lee Street approximately at 1230 West 80th Avenue, City of Arvada, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, be heard in first reading on, at public hearing to be set for April 15th, 2025, at 6:15 PM.
Okay, and that is a motion, so please cast your votes. Oh, Councilmember Pfeiffer, you wish to speak?
Just on the CB 25-008, just clarify, the address is 10230 West 80th Avenue. There was a zero missing in that.
Thank you. All votes are cast, and that is approved 6 to 0, and I forgot to mention earlier with Mayor Simpson being excused on all of these. Now, we will consider the ratification and approval of CP 2025-0001, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, adopting the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan as Arvada's three-mile plan pursuant to Section 31-12-1051E, CRS as amended. And Rob Smetana, Manager of City Planning and Development, will be presenting this item.
Yes, thank you. As mentioned, this would be a ratification of an approval by the Planning Commission to adopt our comprehensive plan, specifically the Future Land Use Map, as our three-mile plan pursuant to state statute. Basically, we also, so the Future Land Use Map is our three-mile plan, and we have not had any annexations greater than three miles from that plan boundary this year, so that also complies with the state statute. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Davis.
I'll make the motion if there's no discussion.
I see no other lights. Please proceed.
I move that CP 2025-0001, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, adopting the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan as Arvada's three-mile plan pursuant to Section 31-12-1051E, CRS as amended, be ratified and approved.
All right, all votes are cast, and that is approved 6 to 0, with Mayor Simpson Next on the agenda is our second public comment period, and we have one person signed up, Barbara Dre. Please come forward, and you will have five minutes.
Thank you so much, Pro-Term Randy Mormon and the rest of the council. Before I begin, I would just like to take about 30 seconds to acknowledge International Transgender Day of Visibility, which was yesterday, and that over 350 people who identify as transgender passed away or were killed in the last year. And I think that's important for us to take a moment of silence. So we'll begin now. Thank you. I'm here today to speak to you about a humane and ethical solution that is direly needed for our homeless population. And I will tell you that some of our most marginalized community members, such as individuals between the ages of 18 and 25, who are transgender, are part of that population, as well as young people trying to start their careers, get their feet on the ground, and with the lack of livable wage and affordable housing for our elderly and our people who are just not financially secure. Our homeless population has increased by leaps and bounds, and I know you all know this already, but Mission Arvada has been providing a severe weather shelter- But Mission Arvada has been providing a severe weather shelter, overnight shelter, solely through donation and volunteer, as you heard tonight, and the City of Arvada has, in the past, paid the Severe Weather Shelter Network that is faith-based to provide that service to the attune of $40,000. I don't think that it's off the mark to support Mission Arvada and the incredible work that they do. I'm just really concerned and confused as to why this has to come to a vote, when in the past it didn't. And it seems like you're listening to the loud negative voices in our community, and you're not standing by our most vulnerable populations and those who are serving them. I don't know if it's a city council, a city council, or a City of Arvada issue here where the bureaucracy lies, but we have been working on this for over a year and even longer, and you see what's happening. It's getting worse. Now, I'm not really sure where these drug offenders and these, you know, accused pedophiles are coming from that are attacking our young people at St. Anne's, but that's really disconcerting. And I can tell you, as somebody who spent the day at Mission Arvada, they're not Mission Arvada patrons. They're taking advantage of a situation because our city has not pulled it together to respond. And I want to say, you know, I, my daughter goes to school on 10th and Wadsworth, it's two blocks from Recovery Works. They've never had any incidents like that, ever. Just let that sink in, because that school's been there a long time, and Colfax is a major hub for prostitution, human trafficking, and drugs. Why is that? Because Lakewood has, in, has, is very aware of the situation and has provided security as well as a plan, and they fully support the Navigation Center. They're funding them. They actually work with Bayard right now, and they're paying for the overnight shelter at Recovery Works. Why isn't the council on board with this? Why does this even need to be a vote, y'all? This is human lives, not just the people affected by being unhoused, but our children and families who patron downtown Arvada. This should be a no-brainer. Talk to your council members in Lakewood. Talk to your Jeffco service providers for homeless. We've put together a presentation with Heading Home, the large organization. We're going out into the community and educating people, and you're still trying to decide if you should vote on this? We need to educate our community to turn over why, where the source of these criminals are coming from.
Sorry, Ms. Dre, your time has expired.
Thank you. But you understand where I'm coming from, and I want to say one last thing. I emailed you, Bob Pfeiffer, Sharon Davis, and Mr. Rupert. I've not heard back from any of you, and I've invited you to come and have coffee with me.
Thank you. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak who has not signed up? Please come forward.
Good evening, council. My name's Keith Cowling. I live at 7256 Juniper Way in Arvada. I am the Finance Director at Mission Arvada and the Rising Church. I was disappointed to learn that prior to last week's council workshop, that Councilmember Davis stated that she had reviewed our books and that we were a poorly-run organization. As the Finance Director, I take exception to that. I've been the Finance Director for over two years. I don't recall you ever coming in to review the books. I'm a, been a CEO of a credit union for 22 years before I retired, an MBA in finance. I can vouch for timely and accurate financial reports reconciled to the bank statements and credit card statements every month. I called, left a voicemail with you on Friday. I've not received a returned phone call because I wanted to talk about your concerns, and I would just encourage you to reach out to me if you do have concerns about the finances, and just caution you about making statements that are derogatory to our organization with, if you don't have the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Please come forward.
Jim Fennemore is up a little bit earlier. I was a little bit, I forgot my notebook here. Does the camera still work?
Yes.
What I would like to do is, this is a document that the City of Westminster has put together for the 72nd Corridor Plan, so I'd like to have you take a picture of this. There's 90 pages here of what they're wanting to do to change that corridor. When you guys have done such a great job on the improvements on the Arvada side, you know, this, we'll start at this Arvada-Westminster line, which is Pierce.
Sorry, I, I don't want to interrupt you, but I just wanted to make certain that you were aware, if we have an individual come up for public comment that is talking on the same subject, we typically limit them to one comment period or the other. Since you're already up here, you know, we can, I don't want to kick you off the podium, but I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. So, can I put this over and you just take a picture, and I'll be done?
Sure. Please lay it there, yes. Thank you. There we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else like to provide a five-minute comment? Please come forward.
Good evening. It's good to see all of you, and I hope you're well. Mindy Moore, 11570 West 70th Place. I am delighted to hear that Councilmember Rupert went to see Mission Arvada today and looked at their operations, and I assumed also looked at some of the financial background of how they operate, or, I know Mr. Cowling is more than willing to make that available, so if anyone has concerns. But they do an incredible job with the amount of services they provide on so few dollars compared to other organizations that rely on contractors because they are volunteer-run. You've also heard tonight from many church leaders from across the city, in all of your districts, who have congregations who care a lot about helping the unhoused and want our city to be known as a community that cares and a community that solves problems, doesn't keep kicking the can down the road. These are your constituents, as you heard, from across the city, not just the folks who live in Old Town who also have valid concerns. I believe that Mission Arvada is willing and able to relocate, to, with help from the city or urban renewal, to a location that will welcome an operation like this. We know we need a 24/7 shelter. We know we need navigation services somewhere in North Jeffco, and I truly hope that our city will work with Jefferson County and other partners to make this happen and stop just blaming Mission Arvada for being a problem. That's not this, it's, that's not the situation at all. I hope you will do the right thing and reimburse them. We heard about reimbursements that the city's asking for, for the water and wastewater operations for bonding. Well, Mission Arvada is asking to be reimbursed the same way that the severe weather network shelter was reimbursed for so many years for their operations. I think that's only fair. They've kept people alive, and I hope that you will direct the acting city manager to go ahead and make that same reimbursement that has been done so often. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in our audience would like to speak? So this would be a different topic than what you shared. Okay.
Now I want to address HB 24-1304, related to minimum parking. So yes, very different. Some comments I've heard on this subject in these chambers are, "We're not dense. People are driving more because of inconvenient RTD headways. The apartments off 57th above Walmart would have been built with no parking. Our land use should not be tied to or based on unreliable RTD. This is unfunded and resource-intensive mandates." Well, I too don't believe our land use should be tied to RTD. They don't understand the relationship between convenience and ridership and are not in our control. Instead, I think we should go above and beyond this mandate and eliminate all minimum parking requirements regardless of development type. Here's why. Developers will be crazy not to build any parking, especially in car-dependent suburbia, but their level of sanity is not as relevant. To secure financing from investors or lenders, developers are typically required to plan parking, as they can't or won't sell a product few will buy. The apartments off 57th above Walmart, if built with no city parking mandates, most likely would have still included off-street parking, but possibly less with a few more dwelling units instead, which helps with the housing supply issue. Returning to RTD, people are also driving more in part because parking minimums force too much consumption of our land, encouraging that singular mode of travel. Removing parking minimums across the board also eliminates the additional resources needed by the city to comply with the state. Longmont is the only city thus far in Colorado to eliminate all parking minimums, referencing the reduction in housing costs, supporting economic development, and improving the convenience of transportation alternatives. So I encourage you all, along with city staff, to reach out to their team and learn more. But they are slightly more dense in Arvada, so let's address the density argument. High River, Alberta, in Canada, with a population of about 15,000, has a density that is about 18% less than Arvada, but has eliminated all parking minimums, referencing their people-first motto, desire for increased walkability and financial productivity, along with taking government out of the business of requiring parking, leaving it to market, market demand. Lansing, Kansas, with a population of about 11,000, has a density roughly 60% less than Arvada, has replaced all parking minimum mandates with recommended guidelines. Chattahoochee Hills, Georgia, that's a fun name. Any Alan Jackson fans? No? Anyway, Chattahoochee Hills, Georgia, has a population of about 3,000 and a density that is roughly 99% less than Arvada. Swaps that are minimum parking requirements for maximum, referencing the need to preserve their rural farmland and increased walkability. The mayor of Chattahoochee Hills also explained the walkable neighborhoods not only boost quality of life for residents, having access to trails, out the back door, and a bakery down the block, but how it also made financial sense with the amount of infrastructure the city must manage being less. According to the Parking Reform Network, for every large city with a population of over 250,000 that has fully eliminated parking minimums, there are two small towns with a population of 25,000 or less that have made the same decision. Infill development also exists for the reason that too many parking spaces have been forced to be constructed and never fully utilized. The city also already recognizes the connection between parking and housing costs with reduced parking minimums related to affordable housing projects. We need to seriously address our cost of living, housing, transportation, tax base, homelessness, health, and safety issues, and I don't believe fighting the state against these particular bills helps us do that. And I know it's easier said than done sometimes, but these types of decisions need to be made based on objective benefit to the community, community, not our emotions. Again, the ultimate goal should be increased flexibility and adaptability with use of land to improve our housing stock, mobility options, and decrease our financial liabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak this evening? All right, seeing none, we will close our final public comment period, and we will go to reports. Does any member of council have a report to share? I believe Councilmember Ambrose, you were first.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So I just wanted to share, I appreciate the shout-out for the newsletter that I have. If you'd like to sign up, you can email me at shaunaforarvada@gmail.com, because I can't make it work with the arvada.org address, so if you want to sign up, you can email me there. And if folks want to meet me in person, I'll be available this month on April 18, on Friday, from noon to 3:00 at Heaven Creamery in Old Town. And I also wanted to say that the Housing Advisory Committee meeting has been rescheduled. It was on the 27th. We got Zoom bombed, so we are having it on April 14 instead at 6:00 PM, so that's a publicly noticed meeting, and we'll be talking about the things that were presented tonight, about the different legislative proposals and how, you know, the Housing Advisory Committee wants to advise council on those things with the expertise from that council. So, members of the public are, can attend, but this time it'll be in person, no Zoom bombing allowed, in person. And, yeah, I think that's it for all my updates.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Thanks, staff, for the retreat on Friday. I really appreciate it. Y'all did a good job. I don't know, there's not very many of you left, but make sure you share it with the rest of the team, and we see a lot of value in that and opportunity to connect and really make the day productive, so appreciate your time in doing that, and look forward to the future of those, as well as, just want to highlight, I think, we've mentioned this before, but I want to say in front of the rest of council, I think having the department updates were valuable. I would like to give them more time to give us more in-depth updates in those, in that setting would be really good. We have a lot of irons in the oven, and it's an opportunity for them not just to pull one or two, but maybe talk about the half dozen they may be working on, to move that needle and meet our goals, so. But again, awesome job. I had a great time. I think we had a good facilitator, and it was good not to have, have staff have a break this time versus always running them, which you did a great job anyways, running them, but it was good to take a break this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pfeiffer. Councilmember Ambrose, did you push again?
Yeah, I did. I'm sorry. I just have one more thing. I wanted to apologize to Councilmember Davis. She brought to my attention that I mischaracterized her statements about Mission Arvada, and I'm sorry for doing that. I do agree with Councilmember Davis that when there's issues, they should be allowed to speak to constituents directly, instead of what I did, which was go to constituents on behalf of the council member, so I do apologize for that, and I just wanted to make that public apology.
Thank you for that. All right, I see no other lights from council. I'll just conclude with a comment of my own. We had a great District 1 Town Hall on Saturday with Representative, State Representative Ferrey and Teteau, as well as County Commissioner Zenzinger, and so we had, and we had, I didn't take an exact count, but I would guess we had around 50 to 60 people there, so it was a very good turnout. We had a great conversations. One, one thing that did percolate to the top for me and, and my conversations with folks was short-term rentals, so I had a lot of concerns that were raised during that conversation. And so, I know, I shared with them, we had a workshop and a conversation on council, and we are discussing this, so I look forward to the part two of that, and I know that, that many of my residents and the residents of our city are interested in that as well, so I'm looking forward to when that will be scheduled. And with that, I will turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. Just one quick update. In preparation for next week's workshop, we will be having an update provided by Presiding Judge Katie Kurtz on municipal court. Thank you.
Thank you. And our city attorney, Rachel Morris.
Nothing for me, Your Honor.
Awesome. Thank you. So with that, we are adjourned.